Let's take a breather there.
I didn't mean for y'all to stand up. You got a few seconds. I'm sorry. I didn't mean for y'all to stand up. I just wanted the group to get ready so we could be on time.
Be ready.
Yeah, we doing the countdown. Good evening. We will start off tonight with the prayer and pledge. The prayer will be led by Councilman Copeland and the pledge by Mayor Protem Bench.
If you'd like to participate, please bow your head. Greetings, Father. We thank you for another day. We thank you for another opportunity for us to come together as city officials, as well as our community, to make the decisions best for our community. Father, we thank you, oh God, that you are bringing new life into our community, into our city. Thank you for the open doors and the opportunity, the revitalization that is coming, the hope and the joy that is being restored within our community. We thank you even for those times that we may not understand that you will give us the peace and the understanding to embrace the future that is coming, the great things that are coming, and that we will all be on one accord and one spirit and the spirit of unity for the success of our great city. Thank you for the city of Saginaw, for who we are, who we have been, and who we shall be. Lord, we ask that you bless us all, give us wisdom, understanding, insight in this meeting this evening. We pray this in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
She's safe, President.
She's safe, President. Can't talk.
Present.
Councilmember Balls is excused. Mayor Protem Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Ostagh?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Copeland?
Present.
And Mayor Moore?
Present.
You have eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you so much. Again, good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of city council. Audience, we're asking that you remain quiet and refrain from clapping and interrupting and cheering and anything that might disrupt the meeting. A friendly reminder to everyone up on the podium and in the audience, please silence your cell phones. Madam Clerk.
We have a couple announcements on the agenda tonight. The first is the yard waste pickup has begun and collection is on your regular trash day. Yard waste stickers are available in the city clerk's office during regular business hours. The third annual Team Up to Cleanup event will be Saturday, May 13th. This citywide event is an effort to clean up litter and debris in various locations throughout the city. Individuals and organizations wishing to volunteer may visit the city's website at www.saginaw-mi.com/c cleanup to sign up. Kickoff will be at 8:00 a.m. in front of City Hall, and volunteers will return to City Hall to wrap up at noon. That takes us to public hearings.
Okay. We have a public hearing. You gotta read it, don't you?
Did you want to read the rules?
Okay. The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to hear the comments from the speaker regarding specific actions being requested. Speakers must limited their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are supporting or against the subject matter of the public hearing. The main speaker, who is the designated representative, will have ten minutes to speak. All additional speakers will have three minutes. This is not a question or answer period. Therefore, questions must not be directed to individual council members, city staff, or to the audience. Madam Clerk.
Our public hearing is a request for an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 3424 East Genesee Avenue.
Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on that matter? Let's get him ready to say.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Manager Morales, I'll be very brief. This is just the second step. For those of you maybe haven't or hadn't seen it over in a while. First, you establish the district around the property. The second one is the actual certificate to grant the tax exemption. So this is the old Walgreens on Genesee. It's a grocery store. It's obviously a much-needed project in the city of Saginaw. The Den Ha family, who actually operated a grocery store on Genesee, this is their two sons that are doing the project. So I can answer any questions during the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Last and final time, is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? I need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to public input.
Speakers who are speaking, I need you to remain courteous and respectful. And when you are called up to the podium by the clerk, you will be timed three minutes to speak, which will be timed by the clerk. Please get all of your important information in within that time, please. Council will allow a few minutes for the speaker to wrap it up so that we can continue with the other speakers behind you. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Christopher Kubik.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Where's the community?
Lifesavers.
I'll be very brief because the three minutes is not really a sufficient amount of time. As the mayor will know, it was in the letter that was hand-delivered to her office last week. But I will say this. In addition to what you say, as a Slaveman, I will say, in the name of the maker of justice, in the name of the maker of peace, in the name of the maker of life, in the name of every Ashkenazi, Mizrahi, Kirite, Sephard, Yemenite, Chohen, Ethiopian, Mountain Jew, Chinese, Mongolian, Boko Haramian, Iraqi Jew, Iranian Jew, American Jew, in the name of every single piece of culture of a diverse Judaism, in their name, I'm here as a convert. In the name of every convert, in the name of every righteous Torah-believing Noachite, or every righteous Jew, in the name of every abused family from the city, regardless of their faith, in the name of every person who has had their life in some way harmed or damaged, or their children or their families, and especially in the name of every life lost, ill, or in jeopardy because of events that have happened to them in the city. As I said, the three minutes is not enough time, so I will try to do a little summary here. My daughter and I, they're in the back watching videos. Our family came to this city from overseas. I'm a veteran. I've spent almost 20 years overseas in the service of our country in one shape or form. Her mom, my wife, is Filipino. But, that being said, we came back to the States, just her and I. While we've been in this city, we have been beaten, homeless, cases messed up by multiple agencies. Education, hers and mine, interfered with. Our car vandalized, physically threatened. We've been mistreated because of perceived race. When people hear Hebrew, they make their assumptions. They don't anticipate that there's such thing as a Jewish convert. Doesn't matter anyway. Bigotry is bigotry. It has no place in this country. We have been led to believe that the dream doesn't apply to us. And some people in this room may know that there's two different dreams. And I speak to you because you have more experience ancestrally than other people here may have to know suffering, to know pain, to know the depths of your soul that you have to pull to, to step up. And because of the things that have happened to my family and I, we've been made the center of gossip. Some of you in this room may know about that. You may like social media nonsense. I don't find it funny. I find social media to be more of a deficit than to something that's helpful in today's society.
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Second.
Secuted.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed.
Granted.
Forty-five seconds you have to hold. One minute, sir.
Thank you. I know we are not alone. I've met others in our time here that have been targeted by people in the community, that people who have power don't wield it ethically. These things have happened and been shoved under the carpet. People have had their cases messed with at DHS, MDHSS is actually the correct name. People who've been targeted by call center workers hired as benefit specialists. Veterans who are being case managed by people that are not licensed because they're still in graduate school. I know something about graduate school. I have several graduate degrees. These people should not be managing any cases. People who have had questionable rental practices. I knew it wasn't enough time. I don't yield, but I have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Angie Miller. I'm the president of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council, and I come before you this evening to give you an update on what labor's been working on. On March 17th, we had a foodpacking event. Over 50,000 meals were packaged in three hours. We had a DJ. 100% of the funds raised were from labor. And then those meals were distributed in, working with the United Way of Saginaw Bay and Genesee Counties. Those foods went out to those three counties. I would like to thank the mayor for coming out and helping us that evening. Last week, labor helped out positive results downtown by taking down the holiday flags and putting up the new spring banners. So make sure you're looking up. Coming up on Friday, April 28th, at 3:30, at the Saginaw Art Museum, we will be honoring those workers who died, were injured while working. It's Workers Memorial Day. So I invite all of you to come out. That's 3:30, at the Saginaw Art Museum on April 28th. The names of Michigan workers who did not come home from their workplace since April 28th, 2022, will be read. So we hope the citizens will join us to remember and honor them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vicki Hill. Amy Morales.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I am here to talk on behalf of the Cinco de Mayo Festival. As everyone knows, that is a very big festival through Saginaw City. Going off 44 years for the parade, and that's specifically what I want to talk about. The parade. We normally have participants over 100 entries, ranging from Detroit, Lansing, Flint, all of the Great Lakes, businesses, veterans, schools, nonprofits, credit unions, banks, politicians. Just majority of the participants are students, youth, children, and we really encourage that. We encourage that most of the participants be the youth. In fact, we even have a sponsorship program to help with participation. So one thing, and the reason why I'm here, is because of the parade route. So the parade route is currently designated to go down from Hoyt Park to down Washington, start at Hoyt Park to Washington, turn onto Janes, and then turn again onto Franklin, ending and turning again on Johnson. So with the fire trucks, the school buses, the castle, the semi-museum, the semi-trucks, that is, from the museum, the wreckers, the flatbeds, 24-foot flatbeds, things like that. We're finding that, and the reason why I'm here is to ask you if it's feasible, ask you for help, ask you to see if we can somehow extend, keep it on Washington, extend who we need to talk to in regards to turning either on Janes, I'm sorry, not turning on Janes, but going straight through SVRC, ending at Federal, right in front of SVRC, which it's a very, very popular, large spectator section, or just continuing on and just ending once we hit Genesee. And then we allow the participants, you decide what you want to do, where your pickup is for all the students, where your pickup is for the truck, I'm sorry, for the trucks, for the school buses, that type of deal. But need your help, want to see any suggestions, anything you can do to help us in regards to keeping the parade route as straight as we can and as close as we can to Genesee or even SVRC. The Cinco de Mayo Festival brings in, and it is one of the biggest that we have in the city, and I'm sure most of you know, everyone's invited to go. I mean, who does not want, and I'm gonna put that out there, the food? Who does not want to participate in that? It gets bigger and bigger every year. Last year actually was the largest parade. There were over 100 entries from all across the state here. So.
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Again, thank you. So, okay, go ahead. Okay, so thank you. The biggest point I want to put across there is the safety. The safety for making multiple turns like that in regards to the spectators being on the side, the spectators, the parking, we know that can be pretty hard at times. Specifically for what I said, the fire trucks, the school buses, the semi-trucks, the wreckers, everything like that. That is just something that we want to know. How can you help us keep this safe? What can we do in regards to extending that to a straighter route? And I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Valerie Blanco.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Valerie Blanco. I am a member of the La Union Civica Mexicana. I am also on the committee for the 44th Annual Cinco de Mayo Festival. This is my 12th year. Actually, it's a little bit more than that. But like Amy here, I am here to discuss the route. It's just really hard and it's really unsafe, not only for spectators, but for our participants in the parade. Sharp turns, as she said, on Janes and on Franklin, is, it's just hard with the big semi-trucks and with the flatbeds. Actually, the city council's flatbed is one of the main ones that we're concerned about. It's just hard turns, and as many of you have been to of our parade, our spectators, as hard as we try to keep them off the road, we have little kids that come on both sides all the time. And again, it's just a safety hazard that we're concerned about. Also, I had a meeting with the Dow today and showed them the route that we were presented with, and they, it's just hard for them to grasp on how you want us to go down Franklin because that gate in back of the Jolt Event Center, or Park, is our main gate where all of our vendors go through, our entertainment goes through, and it's non-stop. It's an all-day thing where it's just cluttered back there with vehicles on both sides of the roads, people coming in and out, trailers coming in and out, our vendors are continuously bringing food in and out. So we're asking, again, to make our route a little bit longer as far as going down, I'm sorry, Washington to Federal. Or our main thing is we wanted to try and go down Genesee and then just disperse on Genesee. And, or if we could, to Federal, turn right on Federal and disperse at Michigan Works. Any suggestions, guidance? We are, we're looking for it. We're looking for the support from the city. The Cinco de Mayo brings in people from all over the Great Lakes. And, I mean, we want SVRC, especially SVRC, to take advantage of this because they're open on Saturday. We want people to go in there. We want them to shop. We want them to buy.
Motion to extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is the second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you. So again, we, anything we can do for the city to bring people here, we're game. We're down for it. We want it to happen. So we, like I said, again, we were asking for guidance on this, on this matter. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, that takes us to council remarks.
And we will begin tonight with Councilwoman Sylvia. She may not be able to speak because she's losing her voice. Thank you so much. I don't, I mean, I don't know if she wants to pull it up close to it and you can hear a whisper. I'm good. Thank you all for coming. Have a blessed day. She said, "Thank you all for coming." You know, you're gonna do sign in a minute up here. Thank you so much for coming. Everybody have a blessed night. Did I say it right? Okay. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I just want to, really nothing too much. I'm happy to be back. I had an opportunity to go to the Masters in Augusta, Georgia, and work down there. And I bring that up simply to say it was very interesting being a part of that environment and working that event. And then coming back, and now we have the Saginaw Spirit, who are going for a championship and seeing how all of that is coming together. So it was pretty cool and it's pretty exciting for the Spirit to be in the running here. So I'm hoping that they pull it through. That's all I have.
We got it. We got it.
Oh, you're claiming it. Got you.
No, we've already got it.
You got the championship, heard?
Oh.
No, we're in the playoffs.
We're in the playoffs, okay.
I'm all set now.
I'm sorry. Next, we have Councilman Ostagh.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor. I just, I do want to address Christopher Kubik. I hope I said that correctly. Thank you for coming out and speaking tonight. The city of Saginaw, I know the city council takes diversity and inclusion very seriously. If you look on our website, not only does our mission and vision statement talk about things, we also have core values. And the core values are just that, diversity and inclusion. We've actually formulated a commission or committee up here that we have worked on in the past. And so I just want to say that we are very serious. I'm thank you for coming out tonight and the people that are listening. Saginaw welcomes everybody, and we've tried to make that clear over the past. I'm sorry you went through some of the things you have went through. A very dear friend of mine is like a brother to me. He is Jewish. And so I can understand some of the things that the Jewish community goes through. So again, thanks for coming out and talking to us. Just another announcement. A friend of mine, Erica LaShawn, she works for the CAC Center. She's going to be holding, or actually, the CAC is going to be holding a mental health event. And this is going to be held on April 22nd, and it's going to go from 12:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. So that will be at the CAC Center over at 2824 Perkins Street. So thank you for putting that event on. We all know that mental health is something that we all need to address and take seriously. And I'm glad that they're doing this for the community. I also want to thank the city manager and our chief of police. I wanted to, and have been wanting to, tour the police station for quite a long time. So they graciously brought me over there, and Brittany Hines gave me a tour. It was pretty interesting, so I got to see quite a bit of the back, behind-the-scenes things, although it was right before the holidays, so a lot of our staff are not there. I also want to thank Heritage Square Neighborhood Association. Some of the neighborhood associations have been reaching out to me. So it's been kind of nice to come to your association, bringing packets, printouts from agendas and such to give an update of the things that they haven't maybe had a chance to see during a council meeting, and also ask questions. Also, another really good event that happened this weekend, thanks to the Rotary Club that put on Saginaw on stage. The event was to raise money for some of the much-needed homelessness shelters here in the city. So the ROC, or the Restoration Community Outreach, and also they raised money for the Well in Saginaw, which is a new organization, and also some money was going to be going to the Hoyt Park and some of the things they are working on there. Also, to Ms. Morales and Ms. Blanco, thanks for coming out and giving some updates on the Cinco de Mayo Parade. I know we're getting pretty excited for it. We are going to be participating as well. I've been to the parade before and watched it, so I'm excited to see what you have this year. I still think my favorite part of the cars, but that's just I still think my favorite part of the cars, but that's just because I grew up as a car guy with my dad, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thanks for all the speakers that have spoken tonight and addressing their concerns that are going on in our community, bringing it aware to us. I know I did talk to one of the other workers from the Cinco de Mayo Festival and was brought to my attention, so I was kinda like, I don't know why the route was cut down, so it's good that you guys brought your concerns because I know we did the Christmas one and we had a direct route. There was no problems. I don't know if there's construction going on on Washington or what, why the changes of plan for the parade, so I'm glad you brought that up and hopefully Phil maybe can help us work on something with that since we are gonna be in the parade as well with a big old semi dinghy, so we need to get this taken care of. We don't want to run no kids over or nothing, you know, so we want to be safe. So yeah, just make sure that that's good. And then just prayers for my little grandson. He has upper respiratory infection. He's six months old, my baby, so the weather's changing. We know Michigan, you know, one minute you have your daisy dukes on, one minute you have your sweaters on, you know, so it just varies, you know. So I don't know if that's what happened to Councilwoman Dowd there that she's sick and lost her voice, but we pray you get it back. And then just pray for us. I got my first conference with the council, so kind of exciting tonight. Some of us are traveling, so just pray for traveling mercies for us for the next three days down by the Capitol. So I'm excited to spend time with my colleagues and get to know them a little bit better. And also, the Mexican-American Council, May fourth, Thursday, is National Prayer Day and I know that we're gonna have something here too, I believe, for that day, but at five o'clock, May fourth, at the MAC Center, the Mexican-American Council, they are hosting something there, so if anybody's interested in going, May fourth at five o'clock. Don't have anything else, but just have a good night, stay warm. I turned my heat off. I'm not turning the back on because I'm not gonna be home anyways, but yeah, so. And then just remember roofing guys, the application Saturday and the following Saturday, if you know anybody, spread the word. Let's get those roofs, raise the roof. Let's get it taken care of, you know, because that way next winter your bill won't be so high. So have a good evening and thanks for attending this meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm gonna keep this short. There are a few of us are gonna be traveling to Lansing for MML. Last time I went there, I hit a raccoon and it, and a last-ditch effort to get back at me, it ruined my alternator. I think that's when I started getting riots from you. Everybody's safe travels. There was extended condolences that I want to give to a fallen officer. His name's Josh Owen. He was a deputy sheriff with Pope County. He had ties to the area. His dad was a police officer in Carlton, but he had entered domestic violence call and had lost his life, so I want to give condolences and let his family know that our community still thinks about him as his family. Thank you to Mrs. Morales and Blanco for bringing that up. I'm sure that the city manager will have some reason why the, currently the planning is the way that it is, but hopefully we can get that all settled. Outside of that, if anybody's power went out yesterday like mine did, I'm glad to have it back on and it was cool to be in like a kid's fort for a day. But that was about it, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening. Thank you so much to our public speakers that shared this evening their hearts and their concerns with us as council. I too also am thankful to have our power back on. I did get a chance to pull out some flashlights that I bought unexpectedly and hid from my wife and it didn't have purpose last night. So for all those husbands, don't complain, go buy the batteries, you know. So thankful that our consumers work and I'm thankful for my neighbors and our community. My neighbors reached out, shared a lot of information that I did not know as a homeowner and what I need to do during the blackout. And so I'm really thankful for that and it made me think about community and reach out to your neighbors. The summer is out. I've, I've lived in my home for almost three years and finally met a new neighbor. So take some time when it's warm out, not snowing. Get outside, find your neighbors. If you have the little ones, run around your neighbor. Don't yell at them. Bring them in, give them a ear, find them a popsicle. I have some in my freezers just for the summer, just to build connection with our community because that's what we need. We need that mentorship and we need that community. So thank you again. I really do love the City of Saginaw. Shout out to our mayor who's been doing some amazing things and I'm looking forward to working with our colleagues this next two days in Lansing, just to really talk about Saginaw and the great things that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Bench.
Well, thank you. I too don't have much this evening, but I wish safe travels to my colleagues who are leaving this evening and in the morning. I am very appreciative to our public speakers. It's always good to hear from Ms. Miller because the labor in Saginaw is always active and always doing good things for the people in need in our community. I would also say to Ms. Morales and Ms. Blanco, I think, I have no idea how they set the parade routes, but I know there's usually a method to their madness. I just wouldn't, I don't know specifically what, what has factored into the route looking the way it is, but based on how intently he was listening, Mr. Carwatt at the back of the room is your go-to person, so before you leave, make sure you talk to the gentleman and I think it's Lavender, but, you know, he's wonderful and if there's anything that can be done to change things, that would be, he would be the guy, so. But we appreciate what you guys are doing and we're very excited for the Cinco de Mayo Parade and the festival. I know I've called and lined up the giant Mike's wrecker truck for us, so my apologies for our giant, you know, float, but we're excited to be there, so. But just thank you to everyone and have a good evening.
Right looking. First of all, good evening, everybody, again. I'd like to first thank God for the weather that we had for the Easter basket giveaway. We gave away one thousand six hundred and forty-eight baskets. For all who came and helped, I cannot thank you enough. The children of the city were happy. We even had baskets that we gave away to churches and other organizations because I refused to take anything home. My house looked like the candy shop. The other thing is that we are traveling tonight to Lansing for, for a two-day conference. This conference is really, really important to me and I hope that it is to my, to my colleagues as well because we will be looking and addressing our issues with other cities. And we have people coming in who are speaking, who have been watching us and you're gonna hear how they feel. Not bad feelings because they've already talked to me. Not bad feelings. Saginaw is on the map. We're rising. I don't know if everybody pays attention, but there's a lot of good things happening in Saginaw. For my public speakers, as always, I'm always excited to see y'all, always. Ms. Miller, this year is gonna be the biggest Labor Day, I mean, that little work thing that we do, no dunk tank, so we can't publicize the mayor gonna be in the dunk tank because it's too cold. No. So I'm looking forward to that on the twenty-eighth and on, I've got two activities coming, the Fourth of May, the first Thursday of the month is National Day of Prayer. At eleven-thirty, I'm asking all and anyone who would like to come and pray with us. We're praying for the city. We're praying for some deliverance. And then the second Saturday of the month is the cleanup to meet up and we're doing it in conjunction with Riverfront this year. So we're trying to get ready, now, let me change that. We're going to get ready for the British Cup that's coming next year. And it's gonna take us probably about a year to get our city cleaned up. So if you're not doing anything on the thirteenth, please come out. I know it's Mother's Day weekend, but do like me. Just put on your boots and come on, let's go, so we can get our city cleaned up. And with that, oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to give my condolences to Councilwoman Garcia for the loss of her grandma. I had the opportunity of working with her at the nursing home that I work at and she was just a joy and delight and I found out we were born on the same day, just different years. And so maybe that's why we got so close. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a presentation tonight, but I just wanted to mention a few items before that. You, many people might recall pre-COVID, I believe it was, that the Convention and Visitors Bureau gave a presentation to council about Henry Marsh Park. So that is moving forward and you'll see activity down there starting in the next few weeks and then the CVB is spearheading that effort, so they are having a announcement on May first, so look forward to that coming. Also, as Councilwoman Garcia said, the ARPA Home Rehab Program Roof Replacement Program will be starting Saturday, April twenty-second, ten to four in council chambers and also ten to four Saturday, April twenty-ninth and staff will be here that entire time both days. That's the, those are the days to get your application and unless you have any issues, then you can make an appointment. Those are limited, so get in if you can and call them as soon as you can if you can't accommodate getting to those two days. The police award ceremony is May tenth at the Saginaw Police Headquarters again, where they will announce Officer of the Year, other service awards, and they will also be swearing in new officers. One of the items I did want to mention is we're working on the budget now and we have the award ceremony coming up, but the last budget cycle, a chief recommended and we recommended it and the budget and council approved it to make the Victim Services Coordinator a city position, a permanent city position. Before that, it was grant-funded, so we always had to count on the grant being awarded. But just looking at the newsletter this year, they provided services to two-hundred-and-six people in that month alone and they provide an average of seventeen, assistance to seventeen-hundred people each year. And National Crime Victims Rights Week is April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth. If you ever get a chance to talk to that division, that's who gave Councilman Ostache the tour, they can provide a lot more information about what they do. Fire Department also did release their twenty-twenty-two statistics some time ago and I, I wanted to highlight the Fire Prevention Division. They provided educational, fire education to almost thirteen-hundred students through school programs, completed a hundred-and-eighteen fire investigations and two-hundred-and-nineteen inspections and pre-plans and that's a division of one person. So that's, that's pretty good. It's two people now, but previously it was one fire marshal. Also, a reminder that they do also work on the High School Fire Academy and the inaugural class graduated in May of twenty-twenty-two. Six students received their State of Michigan firefighter one and two and hazardous material certification. And since graduation, four of the six students are serving in local fire departments with one scheduled to be hired by the Saginaw Fire Department this year. So that's a great program. The negative of it is our city students are not signing up. So if you know kids that are interested in a career, they can come out of that program certified and they're getting jobs. There's not a lot of certified firefighters around and there aren't a lot of full-time fire departments, but the ones that are, I know Councilman Williams can probably tell you it's tough to find people to work there, so definitely encourage kids to go through that program and we want to hire kids from the city for our fire department. The second class started in September of twenty-twenty-two with six students as well, so again, it's a partner program that we do of the Saginaw Fire Department, Saginaw County ISD and Delta College. I'll work on that. Great program. So with that, we do have our city engineer here this evening and he's going to do his annual report on construction season, so Travis Hare, I'm gonna come up to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, you council. Back again. It's construction season. It's our fifth season here in Michigan. So just gonna give a little bit of an update from our projects from last summer and then I'll go right into the projects that we have planned for this summer. So we've got, here's our summary of our projects from last summer. We had probably one of the largest construction seasons that the city has seen in a long time and that's just talking about road and bridges. We had, our two federal jobs were West Holland from North Woodbridge to Hamilton and then East Remington Street right here next to City Hall. Those were both full reconstructions. West Holland, we replaced some sewer, the full water main along the whole stretch and all the road driveways, ADA ramps and the such. We had, also had a couple other reconstructs. Lapeer Avenue was, I believe, our fiscal year twenty-one CDBG project. For the last probably ten, twelve years, we've been marching down Lapeer and we've got, I think, one more section to go. But this was a full reconstruct with new water main and everything like that as well from Roosevelt Austin to Sixth. We do have some grass growth yet this year, so we're not quite done, but we're getting there. Wadsworth Avenue, we completed last year. It's a little stretch that goes from Vets Memorial Parkway into the Lake State Rail Yard. That was our biannual reconstruct for a local street last year and then we'll have another one of those coming up in the next fiscal year that starts in July as well. Some other road resurfacing, we had a concrete repair project on East Holland, this one block right here from Water to Washington next to City Hall. And we also had East Remington from Washington to Jefferson. So we did a lot of panels and concrete joint patches throughout there and did ADA ramps to try to keep that road in a good condition without having to do a full reconstruct moving forward. We had our twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two millinery surface was one of the largest we've done in a while. It was about one-point-seven million dollars. We had Court Street, Genesee Avenue, Janes Avenue were our major streets that we did. We also did Weber and then the Delaware-Northmore Berger neighborhood. We did a lot of streets in there as well. And then our fiscal year twenty-two CDBG project was Twelfth Street from Perkins to Janes, so we got that completed along with ADA ramps as well as ADA ramps running along Walnut. We did the Holland Avenue Bridge last year with concrete deck patches and then I finalized off with epoxy overlay, so that's been completed. We did the same thing on Genesee Avenue Bridge. We have not completed the epoxy overlay yet. We, it got too late in the year, had to be rebid and so we got all the concrete patches done, but about Memorial, just about the week before Memorial Day, we'll be closing that down again for a week to get the project finished up. We also did Wicks Park Drive conversion to a non-motorized path. As you can see the picture on here, it was a drone that our consultant took a picture with. That was almost two miles worth of road that about half of it was converted to the Ironbell Trail, non-motorized path. So that project turned out good. We've got some nice street lighting out there as well that will be getting powered up here in the next month. On the right, right side here, we did Baumstreet Surface Lot, which as you remember, a couple years ago, that parking ramp up was there, that was demolished and then we finished up that new surface lot last summer. We also did the parking lot at Anderson Richmond Center. That was appreciated over there. It's, it's been bad for a little bit and it was nice to get that one done. Then we also did the fire training facility parking lot that's right next to the Holland Avenue Bridge right here behind City Hall. I just want to talk real quick about some of our project selection factors. You know, we look at major traffic generators near schools, hospitals, major businesses, industries. We look at, you know, what type of street it is, whether it's like a major or a local street. There's different funding levels for each type of, of road. We look at our PESA ratings, which won't dive too far into those, but it's a one-to-ten scale, one being the worst, ten being brand-new. And so we, we look at that and it's kind of a good guideline for what type of road fix we can do on a road. You know, a one, another two or three would be a complete reconstruction, almost too far gone to do anything else with. So we try to take care of these roads before they get to that level. Obviously, funding is always, is an issue, so we do the best we can with that. Moving on, I just wanted to show a brief snapshot of what we have right here for our PESA ratings. Obviously, the red is not good. That, the red is the poor on that's ratings, one through four. As you can see on our major streets, that actually has gone up a little bit from the last couple of years, but our local streets, the, the funding is still laxing there from, from our act fifty-one dollars. And so as of this moment right now, we are doing a resurfacing one year and a reconstruct the next and that's kind of the annual back and forth we're doing, trying to take care of some of those local streets. The funding levels just aren't as high as some of the major streets. The funding levels just aren't as high as some of the major streets. All right, I'm gonna jump into actually what we have going on this summer. We have a millinery surface project again, which we'll talk about these a little bit more in depth here. I'll try to, you know, not bore you guys with some of the details on these, but we have Mackinac Street is our federal job this year. That is from Congress to Alexander and that'll be the last stretch to be done. So all of Mackinac from Niagara all the way up to Weiss will have been done in the last five years. We'll have Meredith Street, our local street reconstruction for this year. That's going to be that two-block section right next to MMR, just off M13 towards St. Mary's. And then we're looking at, we got funding from CDBG to resurface Third and 10th Street with also doing ADA ramps in that area and on Janes. So we'll be doing those this summer as well. Just finishing up Genesee Avenue Bridge and then as you, I'm sure have already noticed, Johnson Street Bridge is closed right now, so we have had a project going on there as well. The other one I'll touch a little bit more on, but we're looking at doing traffic studies and getting conversion of our one-way pairs to two-way streets. So I'll touch on that a little bit later. So first one is our 2023 millinery surface. Our initial thoughts were to finish up Janes, go from Sixth all the way to the city limits and then to finish up Genesee from what we did last year. Now, as of Friday, after this was already turned in, we had a meeting about the Memorial Cup, so we're probably gonna change, change our plans a little bit and try to take care of Jefferson and Tuscola and all the roads surrounding the Dow. They're in a similar shape to Janes and Genesee, so we're still trying to formalize that plan. But with Memorial Cup coming in next year, it'd be good to get some of those roads completed. We have about $750,000 in funding between major street and local streets for that. We actually had a little bit of a surplus after putting in our budget for local streets, so we actually added that money late. So that'll be an extra project we weren't actually planning on for the summer, so that's good. That'll be, because it's fiscal year 24, that'll be, you know, late summer and early fall timeline. Mackinac Street's our big one. Like I said earlier, it's Congress Avenue to Alexander Street. It's a full reconstruction, doing drive approaches, ADA sidewalk ramps, improving drainage in the area, and we're also replacing the water main. We're actually taking the old water main out of service and reconnecting to another one that's already there that's in a lot better shape. So that'll take care of any lead lines and all that kind of stuff that's in the area as well. Rhodey Brothers Excavating won the bid for that through the state, so they'll be, we'll be starting that here, May 1st, so only a couple of weeks away. We do have a public meeting on that, I believe it's Monday, April 24th, if I'm not mistaken. So that'll be right here in council chambers as well. So that project will go until beginning of October, as if all goes well, of course. But, so that's about a $2.9 million project. Bids have been coming in quite a bit high the last couple of years, so we're trying to plan for extra costs and trying to minimize, you know, that as much as possible. The next one I'd like to talk about, Meredith Street, that little stretch right next to MMR, that'll also be a reconstruct. We have already closed off the railroad crossing that's to the east there and we're actually going to be getting about $50,000 from the state for closing that off, which will be put towards this project. So that'll, that'll free up about $50,000 from our city budgets, which is much appreciated for that project. That road is in pretty poor shape and I know we've had complaints for a couple of years now from MMR about just teeth shattering driving through there, so luckily there's no patience in them when they're leaving, but. So that project will start probably towards the end of July, beginning of August, and that'll go until beginning of November. We've got the resurfacing of Third Street from Janes to LaPierre and then 10th Street from Janes to Tuscola. This is a CDBG project. We received $300,000 for the road and $50,000 for ADA ramps in this area and we're hoping to bid this with our fiscal year 23 ramps as well to try to get a better bang for our buck. So that project will be starting, you know, end of July, beginning of August, and that'll go for a couple of months there this fall. Everything seems to be pushing later and later in the summers with material issues and whatnot, so we'll be getting that done hopefully this fall. This is the same slides I had last year for this. I only left it on here because we're not completed yet, but this is Genesee Avenue Bridge. All the sidewalk repairs, deck patches have all been completed, the approach work's done. All we're waiting on is some better weather to do an epoxy overlay. Luckily, the Johnson Street Bridge and this bridge are both having an epoxy overlay done. It's kind of like a fancier chip seal, if you will. It seals in so no moisture can get into the deck, but we have the same subcontractor doing both projects. So luckily, they're just gonna complete one and jump over to the other so that the bridges won't be closed at the same time. So Johnson Street Bridge, like I said, that's underway right now. We're actually planning on opening that bridge up yet this week for about three weeks. We have a 28-day cure still. The concrete's already cured enough to drive on, so rather than keeping it closed for no reason, we're gonna open it up for three weeks and then we'll shut it down for one week to do the epoxy overlay. That 28-day cure is a requirement we have to wait before we can do the sealer. So that project, we're, we're hoping will be done by Memorial Day. So this one, one-way pairs, as you all know, we have like Fifth and Sixth, Jefferson and Owen, we have Hess and Gallagher. There's, I think, five or six one-way pairs in the city. Back when we had 100,000 people, these were needed with all the industry and GM and everybody steering gear in here. Now, we're seeing some issues, you know, the traffic volumes are down, speeds are up, crashes are up and the COVID pandemic, pandemic did not help things with that. So we have been doing studies with a, with a private consultant and going through these studies to check to see if they're good applicants for converting to two-way streets. And so Fifth and Sixth will be the first one we're starting on and so we're hoping to do that this fall and they will be probably closed for the whole two or three weeks it takes, so new signage and pavement markings can be put up. And, you know, any signals, we'll have to add signal heads and, and all that kind of stuff. So we have about $150,000 budgeted for that. We're starting with Fifth and Sixth because East Side Soup Kitchen has a plan for an expansion and they actually want to close the road, I believe it's Perkins, might be Tompkins, I can't remember which one. Thompson, thank you. So that'll be part of that project as well. They want to expand into the existing Thompson Street, which goes east off Genesee. So we'll be looking at doing that this fall. Just wanted to show, I know we kind of show this every year. This is just a total cost of, you know, our road and bridge construction for the summer. I like to show the non-city funds on here. That includes, you know, anything CDBG, which obviously is passed through the city, but comes from the feds. We get federal dollars from the state for our road projects. I also get a couple of grants, so we, we're actively looking for funding opportunities so we can match with city dollars rather than paying 100%. This city funds includes road, water and sewer, as the note says there. So that's, that's what these funds are. Last year, we were about a 50-50 split as well. So we, we try to, try to match as much as we can and utilize any grant funding there is. Do have one project that's kind of a big one coming up this summer that's, you know, kind of related to roads, but not really. We have, you know, our water shop is out replacing service lines and repairing water mains and any sewer breaks and catch basin issues. For years, you know, with the COVID pandemic, they got behind quite a bit with being about half-staff or less and they used to do their own patches and they're still trying to ramp that up, but we have about 2,000 patches in the city that are still not, they're temporarily, temporarily patched, just need to be permanently patched. And so I'm sure you can see driving around some of these areas. And so this will be, you know, project number one of probably a couple for the next couple of years to try to get caught back up and to complete those patches. So this is about 1.9 million. I think you guys just approved it at the most recent council meeting, if not, it was two, two ago. So most of these are the water services that, that water shop is going through and replacing as part of the lead abatement program and so we're coming through behind them and trying to fix some of that stuff up. There was some good news here, fall of last year. We were, we were notified in September, October that there was extra obligation. What that means, there's extra funding at the state level for federal projects. And so that was actually given about two and a quarter million that has to be matched. We have to have that obligated to projects by September of this year and so we had to advance quite a few projects, as you can see on this list here. Some of these are already in the hopper for the next couple of years. We brought them forward with this extra funding and it, it's gonna be a, a good construction season next year with, with the extra projects we have. Mackinac Street, we were able to reduce our local match and increase the federal amount. Jefferson, we added extra allocation of funding to that project as well and lowered our local match. Sheridan Avenue next year, same thing. And then we actually added 17th Street to this list. So that 550,000 extra we did for that was gonna be, it eliminated 100% of city funds from that project. So we will be matching that. There is still requirements for that, but that freed up a lot of city funds for us to do other millinery surfaces and such. And also with that, we were able to add South Wheeler Street as well to our 2025 construction project. And so there's, with this extra money and also with ARPA and everything coming around, there's gonna be a couple of good construction seasons coming up. So just moving here, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but here's our, some of our future proposed construction. We have our annual, you know, concrete repair projects and millinery surfaces that we try to do. Like I said, we've got Jefferson, Sheridan and 17th Street are all gonna be federal projects that will be constructed next summer and I'll be back here this time next year to talk a little bit more in depth about those. We have been actively applying for Sparks Grants through the MDNR and those are 100% grant-funded, no match requirements, so we would love to get some of that money for parked trails. We're also looking at Wheeler and Hess out in 2025. And one thing, we, we were awarded about two months ago for Cass Street in Old Town. That's the two blocks there from Niagara to Michigan. We were awarded a TAP grant for about $650,000 and that road will actually go back as a brick road. So that'll be the first one that we have done in the city probably in close to 100 years, so that'll be kind of exciting. That'll be 2025 construction for that project. So we're, we're excited for the challenge with that one. It'll be first for a lot of people. And here's just some of the other ones we've got coming in the next, you know, seven years or so that's on our CIP, but that's all I got for you. I tried to keep it short. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Yes, Councilman Copeland.
And this would either you or the manager. In regards to, I know a while ago we had a presentation about, and the study regarding the road around Ojibwe Island. That was one of the things that we discussed why we shut it down in there, so was some, some stuff that needed to be redone. It was a lot in here. Was that, I didn't see that in here, but is that a plan that we have?
Yeah, that, that is not in here. That road is a completely private park road, so we would not be able to use our 202 or 203 road funding on that road. Two years in a row now, we have applied for a grant through Eagle at the state level for a rubber modified asphalt. And I think the last two years was about a $400,000 grant we were applying for to repave that whole road and parking areas and which would include like a rubber modified or rubber recycled asphalt. And we have been denied two years in a row. It's, there, we're looking at other options, but as of right now, there's limited funding for it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone, I'd love to see this one. Councilwoman Sylvia.
I'm gonna do my best. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. When you talk about the one-way streets, would you really actually consider, what kind of data do you have in changing Holland and Remington into two-way streets? I just, I can't even fathom that, but that's just me.
Yeah, so, no, that's a good question. Holland and Remington, due to logistics and curves along that road, would probably be one of the last and is probably is one of the more complicated conversions we would have to do. An overarching thing with M46, which is the state road, they're doing long-term studies right now as far as reducing lanes and converting those, that to two-way streets as well. And part of that would probably be the city taking over one leg of Holland that's theirs currently or Remington, whichever. So that would be a big coordination effort with them before we could even do any conversions on those roads. Eventually, you know, if it happens, what it probably would entail would be closing one of the blocks so that you only have one street going on to each bridge from each side. That'd be the best way and then one would probably stay a major, you know, and everyone would take that road and then the other one would have less traffic on it. But that's all things we're looking at and coordinating with MDAON.
So this will come up again?
It'll come up again. We're probably quite a few years out with that one, but, yep.
Councilman Ostache, you're doing like sign language, honey.
Thanks, Mayor. Excellent presentation, by the way, too, and I like the way that you laid it out with what projects are being funded with what, because that's easy for me, because I do print these off and take it. The, and kudos to the brick project down in Old Town, too, because I know the Historic District Commission and the business owners were excited that you guys were doing that. So, so that's nice. You did mention some of the decreased in Act 51 dollars, so are we down from the past?
Yes, so the, the new census, there, there's always been a level of about 50,000 people. That changes a multiplication factor as far as our funding. With the new census, we dropped under 50,000 for the first time in a long time and so that dropped us from like a one and a half to a 1.4 multiplication plus losing population. We lost about, it was close to a million dollars of our eight million in road money, so it's about a 15% decrease and that took effect immediately for the federal fiscal year 21, which was October of 2020. So, so that took effect immediately and now three years later, we're finally back up to the levels we were in 2020 with just our local, you know, local funding. But if, if we would have stayed at 50,000 and, you know, didn't lose that population, we'd probably be up about one and a half or two million based on the average increases every year, so.
Thank you.
That's why it's important that we build our population. You hear me say it all the time, we're under 50,000. If they're cutting on that end, can you imagine what they would do with community block grant money and some of these other funds we get? We cannot afford it. So if you got a friend, tell him, come on to Saginaw, come on down, because we are a welcoming city and we welcome everyone.
Act 51 has a population component and so does revenue sharing.
I did not hear you.
In their formula.
What did he say?
Act 51 has a population component and so does revenue sharing.
Yeah.
Population goes down, your revenue sharing formula will go down, too.
So when you hear me talk about it, it's just not in my head. I don't want it to materialize where they take anything else from us.
George.
Yes, George. I'm sorry, yes, Councilman Copeland.
This is for our manager and from what our mayor just shared, is, will we be putting for a committee that will actually strategically start planning how we as a city increase that population?
Well, I guess if council wants to do that, then that's something we can do. There are a lot of organizations that are actively working on, on programs like that. Community Foundation does and, you know, SVSU has the Alumni Program where they try to bring back alumni, so probably the best way to do that would be to work with those organizations to highlight. The Chamber has a program, too. Saginaw Future does that, so council members are interested in those things, maybe we can try to get with those organizations and work collectively.
But we as a city, we don't.
We don't have one right now, no, no.
We are doing stuff behind the scenes, trust me. Any more questions?
One more.
Yes.
So you were talking, Councilman Copeland brought up Ojibwe Island and you talked about the grant that we applied for, for two years that we didn't get. So was it a scoring issue again or how, how was that?
Yeah, so I think with the scrap tire grant for, that's been around for probably 12, 15 years, something like that. They're kind of going more towards research development right now as far as trying to find new ways and what we were applying for was, you know, kind of a tried and true ground rubber asphalt. And I think they're, they're partnering more with like Michigan Tech, Michigan State to do, you know, research projects where you do half a mile of road and half the road is this ground rubber, the half is, you know, so they're trying to do like test projects like that and I think. so they're trying to do like test projects like that, and I think that's kind of where they're going. They also have had decreased funding in the last couple of years as well, which is making it more competitive, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any more questions?
I had one real quick.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. For the, the non-city funding, did that include IIJA funds that had been allocated?
We, no, the, any IIJA funds would have been included in, yeah, in the non-city funds, but we have, to date, not received any. There are also competitive grants, and we are actively applying, but we have not received any IIJA funding to date. We've been applying to try to get some projects, but we have been unsuccessful so far.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Council members, if you know something, call them and let them know so that they can apply. Every time I hear about something, I'm shooting emails to people. So if you know of anything, help us out. Help us out.
And they're so busy down in engineering right now. They are applying for things. So if you've seen it, they've probably seen it, too, but if any council members are interested, I know a couple of you did do ride-alongs with snowplows at one time, but if you want to go down and see what Travis is working on or see what they're doing down there, just let us know, and we can get you down there. But there, you really have to say, and I know Councilmember Balls is a big proponent of it, but they've been doing so much work in public services the last probably five or six years. That's why they're getting more roadwork done, because the staff down there, you know, Travis is doing the engineering with Beth London, who's the Assistant Director, and also the staff in streets have been actually doing the work that you see. So a lot of those workers are city workers, so they're, they're probably busier than they were before. Is that right, Travis?
Yeah, and, and now honestly with the ARPA, any, any ARPA project like that runs through our office as well. So, so any, you know, the city hall upgrades or cemeteries, drainage, we're, you know, we help out at least with reaching out to consultants and getting designs done and, and getting everything out to bid and overseeing the projects. So that's a, we, we're very busy on our own road and bridge projects, and then with the ARPA projects coming down the pipeline, it's gonna be a busy couple of years. So if you know anybody who wants to be an assistant city engineer, let me know.
It's funny, but he's not joking, right?
I'm not joking.
Don't joke, don't joke. I'm gonna be on a groove right now. Any other questions? Mr. Here, we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you, and that concludes the management update.
Okay.
We are now at the consent agenda.
Yes.
Will you ask questions still for the update?
To who?
The, the city manager.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
With what Mrs. Morales and Ms. Blanco brought up, was there, what was the reasoning behind?
I don't have that in front of me, and I was, I, the best way to go about this is to contact the department first, because I know Phil isn't aware of the parade route. Phil's the gentleman back here in the Liloq shirt, but I know he.
Travis, they come and see you, too, so don't.
That's the department you'll deal with, but I know he, he's not aware of the route right now either, so we'll have to research that. But if you want to talk to him after the meeting, he'll give you his contact number and everything to see. The, the reason for the current route, M13 is a state road, too, so everything has to go through MDOT, so he can help, help you with that.
Okay. Thank you. That was it. Oh, are you gonna go to MML?
No.
No.
All right.
You got work to do.
Got some health issues right now.
You got work to do, trust me. Yes.
Just to recap, you, you spoke about the Saginaw Police Department Awards, May 10th. What was the time again?
10:00 AM, 11:00 AM.
11:00, thanks. And also, Mr. Manager, thank you this week because it came up at an association, a neighborhood meeting about a roof program, so I just want to announce that right now. You gave me access to Yolanda, and she cleared up some things. And so the question that came up was, if I've bought my home on a land contract and I'm the occupant, could I qualify to apply for the program? And the answer was yes. So those of you who are watching, yes, the answer is yes, but thank you. Thank you for that this week.
Yep, and they are still, you know, be patient with the process. They're still working on the furnaces right now, but it's
Very good point.
A lot of work to get them all installed and also go through all the paperwork. I know I've had two stacks of contracts, and I know a third one's coming, so. But it'll, it'll all get done, and I think it's a great program.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Now let's move on to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, channel 191. I need, I need a motion to approve the agenda as he is leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any exceptions?
Number five.
Number five. Councilman Williams. Any other? Take vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Item number five is to approve the purchase with Leads Online LLC for $19,365 for a three-year software subscription for the police department, police investigative services. Councilmember Williams.
Yeah, I would just like for Chief Ruth, if he could explain what it is and how it's advantageous for our department.
Yes, basically, we've had a, a vendor that we've utilized for the last eight to nine years, and the vendor went out of business, and now the only company out there is Leads Online that tracks our pawn shops. And our, our, like catalytic converters that are stolen and sold to the scrap dealers, this company does exactly the same thing. So we can tell whose pawning items that were taken, and could be your neighbor's item, could be your item that was taken from your vehicle or your home. So this, anybody that pawns that item has to show an identification, give a fingerprint, picture, the whole nine yards. They've done that for the last, I think we've done it for the last 10, 12 years, but we're just going to a new vendor at this point. Very, very beneficial for us.
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need motions.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any boards of commission report? Yes, Mayor Protet.
Oh, just a reminder, the city-county school liaison.
You gotta talk louder so they can hear you.
I'm sorry. The city-county school liaison meeting will be held April 20th, this Thursday, at 5:30 at the Board of Education. Just if anyone has any collaborative ideas or anything like that, we were going to talk to our, our cohorts and come back to the, the city-county school liaison meeting with hopefully some collaborative ideas for the three governing bodies to work on. So far, we have a student board of registration day and working with the student government to maybe get some students to attend some of our boards and commissions meetings or even join them where appropriate. But anything like that in that vein that you guys have, please email it to me or feel free to share here in the meeting. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee? Council persons, please, if you have any suggestions for the school-county liaison, please forward them to counsel to Mayor Protet's bench so that she can make a report so that we don't look like we're not trying. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to appointment of board commission and committee members.
I need a motion to approve one through four, allowing rooms for exceptions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support, oh, no. Yes, it's been moved in support, I'm sorry. Do we have any, do we have any exceptions? Any none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to ordinance introduction. We have one on the agenda. It's to add the low-income housing tax exemption for Saginaw-Shiawassee Habitat for Humanity to the table of special ordinances. Not sure on that number, anybody. Of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to adopt. I mean, I'm saying, I need a motion to introduce this motion.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support. This, this, I'm sorry, this ordinance will be laid over for
Betterment.
Not yet. Not till I vote. Okay, good. Thank you. They're, they write me notes, and that's why I don't look at people's notes, because they're confusing. It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. This ordinance will be laid over for, as part of our city charter. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to resolutions. We have one on the agenda. It's approving an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 3424 East Genesee Avenue.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any other motions? Anything on the floor?
Motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn while y'all getting everything together.
You replaced him.
She made it and they'll support it.
Yeah, but she made it before I asked her to. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Everybody have a good evening.